I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any amendments to be adjourned? Mayor's report. Well, as this is our last meeting of this year. Wow, it's been a year. And thanks to all of our staff, great staff that we have here, for the city of Lindesburg and all the employees here. Thank you for all that you do. And many of you do go above and beyond every single day, and we do appreciate that on behalf of the citizens of this community. Exciting, exciting new ideas, a new thing coming up for Lindesburg, I think, in 2019. Like to introduce our newest employee here, Lucas Meads, this year. He wants to stand up and welcome Lucas. He is the assistant to the city administrator, a new position for Lindesburg. So it'll be kind of exciting to see. And we've been telling Lucas we expect big things out of him, so no pressure, no. But anyway, it's wonderful to have you here. As we look forward to this season of giving and remembering the people within our community that are needing a hand up or some extra help, I hope all of us will remember that as we celebrate Christmas in our community and in our homes. A lot of needs are out there that we know, we see every day. So I hope we will continue to have the generous spirit that I know that is present here in Lindesburg.
No, we.
No, that's, how come? Definitely don't have to have that. We just always have to have a meeting, like, on that. What, say, New Year's Eve?
New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, you first, I get it, right.
Sometimes yes.
Oh, we don't. So this is it. The want to make a special mention of the first event for the 150th anniversary. We've all been saying the word sespo centennial for, I think, about five years now here. We're going to be having that first, first celebration on New Year's Eve in the Sunstrom Building. You go online, you can find out about tickets and all of that. I hope that a lot of people from our community will be there and help kick this year off in a great way. So anything else you'd like to say about that deal?
Actually, at 1:00 in the afternoon, we are unveiling a new wild dollar to add to Lindesburg's wild dollar herd. So at 1:00, there will be fun and frolic, as Ray and Lincoln will be raising some flags and dedicating the newest wild dollar. The Sunstrom event is going to be a great deal of fun, roaring 20 theme. Costume's not required, but it'll be a lot more fun if you do. See you there?
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any? Rick is signing up for guitar lessons, I believe. He had to be there.
You should be all.
Anyway, it's been a great year. I'm enjoying being the mayor of Lindesburg. Going to be celebrating a year next month. So we will go on to the agenda. Do I hear an approval of consent agenda?
So, Luke?
Second.
Remember the second to approve the consent agenda, Rossi? Rick?
Yes.
Jody? Yes. Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Consent agenda is approved. Are there any appointments?
No appointments.
No appointments? T and Z hearing?
No action before.
All right. Full business, community stage. Okay. Does everybody have one of these and some share place?
They should, yes.
There are some people here, Rick? Mike Dreyer and Jim Osnar and Holly, would you guys all come up to the podium, please? There was questions asked last month, two weeks ago, about specific concerns, requests about information for this new stage. What, how, you understand what you're looking at right here?
What you're looking at before you are the updated plans based upon what the committee and the decision felt like was necessary for the needs of the community. These are still pretty basic plans and of course nothing that would be finalized yet, but don't show the hydraulics and some things like that, but a basic plan to give you an idea of what would be a self-contained unit that would be very portable and very easy to store and very easy to set up. And you're also seeing in front of you council questions to be addressed. These are the things that you requested of the committee the last time that we met. And we were asked to brainstorm and just bring some thoughts back to you. These are reports, not final answers, you could use for you to look over and then have discussion about and come up with yeses, no, or your other ideas. And then one of the things that was also brought to our attention, I believe possibly by Corey here, sometimes I'm not positive, was effectively a business plan that's in storage place for how this would sustain itself. And Mike Dreyer was very good to look up some information and put this together with just an overview and what the solution we think would be for this and how we would execute it and things like that. So we asked that she review these and then I think most of the questions or the answers, the answers that you're going to use are going to come from these two guys behind me probably, but we'll provide some good discussion anyway.
Thank you, Holly. One of the, one of the issues that we did talk about was storage. Jim, did you talk about the whole?
I talked, I talked to Charlie Dyer, and he said he has a RV and he'd be willing to store for around a hundred dollars a month. I think currently us RVs are shit now, so it's going to take up about the same amount of, maybe 20 feet long and about you can have to go on.
Thank you. Mike, you want to talk about insurance calculation?
We've looked at a couple of different options. The easiest is going to be to put it with, since we're proposing a city-owned trailer to put this on the city's insurance ballpark quote that I received for both physical damage coverage for the trailer itself and then liability that would extend to it would be anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 a year additional. So that would be for a 20% policy on the trailer.
And council, feel free to ask any questions.
So that would be roughly, let's move it up the slope, $1,200. So that would be roughly, we'd have to come up with or finance 200 a month for storage and insurance.
Yeah. In addition to that, I think the committee just has kind of a budget of about $1,000 of routine maintenance. So $3,500 a year roughly is what we're figuring to maintain. Obviously, the maintenance is going to be hitting this from year to year, so years are going to be worse than others.
$3,500 a year, I guess.
And the goal would be to make this a self-sufficient project through either rental fees or naming rights to the stage, some way to generate revenue for this that it would not have to be a budget item.
Like the golf course.
In certain fashions, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. A big question that we talked about, who would be allowed to use this stage? That was kind of a big, big question. And if it is owned by the city, what does that mean? And as far as usage and permission and all of that?
What, I was wondering, Mike, what, with the liability part, I mean, if, we don't have any specified person to set it up, take it down, so the liability ought to be very, a lot higher if someone is doing it. So have you thought about that part?
Committee discussions have, have hinged to delivery being a service of the city during normal business hours to where, and this is mobile and, and at least based on the design, it would be moved with a halftime pickup truck. We would ask the city to move it through a partnership or cooperation with the Lindesburg Association we've talked about and pending their approval, but creating a setup team that would be trained in how to put this thing up and tear it down. That way, the organization renting it would be obligated to do that and show that you have people that are partly trained and manage the risk a little bit better.
Oh, sure.
Was there any challenges or anything else about the committee? It wouldn't just be anybody could just volunteer?
Yeah, instead of all of the bases, we basically had to pick the people or ask. We're, we're thinking about six people, so they'd be pretty clean to.
One, yes. One of the things that is, if this does come to be, is that if you've ever tried to set up the home and stuff stage, it's a little bit like an active, oh, I mean, you need a whole lot of people and strong people and creative. Somebody doesn't break when we're trying to do it. So this kind of a stage, Kelly assures us is much easier than.
Two people. Seth? Two people. Hydraulically leveled and hydraulically lifted into place the roof and basically it would be the gating or the steps, those kinds of things would be mounted, you know, by people just manually, but.
Current guess is about five to 10 years, depending on how it's best a little bit, with the hope that there would be more opportunities.
I guess, Mayor asked a question, who would be able to, I don't know, what would be the answer to that? Who would be allowed to rent, anybody, individuals, groups, can we specify?
We talked, in, in committee, we've talked about that being an issue that if you want to have a birthday party and you really want to have this stage, that might not be the best situation. The partnership with the Lindesburg Association allows us a filter and an approval process that goes through that mission, which is to promote support and conduct activities that enhance the quality of life in Lindesburg. It's fairly broad, I suppose, provide, at least we could ask you why your birthday party is going to enhance life in Lindesburg. So that would, that's one of the plans that, I know that we addressed it all completely, but that's the first filter that we're looking at.
Would you say, say that it'd be all public events versus private events? Would that be a way that someone would?
Well, it could be a ticket, I guess.
But some of it is public, not the patient only, I guess maybe.
In the note that says, at this time, the stage will not be made available for private use only for events that benefit the community as a whole. So that, that's.
Bethany College or the hospital or an entity like that, if Mike creates a discussion around that, that would be one of the things to think about.
So it's kind of anticipated this will leave Lindesburg?
No, not at this time. That is, there's potential for additional revenue, but if we got to the point, these things are in demand. Through research, we've learned that other entities, which our parking rep has one that you can rent for almost $1,000 a day. So if we've got to that point, it might be something to be explored.
I'm just thinking of, you know, closer to home, of course, Saline with the Smokie River Festival. They have, you know, huge event. They've got the KKOA, you know, the drag races, the car show, and stuff like that. It's close, so it's not out of the possibility that a group like that or groups like that could possibly rent this.
There was a recommendation. There was a recommendation. There was a recommendation from Chris Dilewine, the engineer that's working on, so Kelly Dowler, that it not be transported long distances if we were to define that this would be the design that we're using, just simply because of some of the airflow issues, they kind of travel all the higher speeds and tear it up, so.
So back on the question of, I can see Bethany College, high school, or the school district possibly doing something for the school or one of the schools. Just trying to visualize, then all the festivals and concerts that we have, those are all open to the public. Just trying to think, are there other private possibilities to do unnecessary limit if it wasn't too costly to use them?
Any other questions?
I have another question. Sorry to pull you on this mic. Sure. I'm very sensitive to what we're going to do in the back of it. Sound is very directional, and this is just a big flat area. It would be nice to bounce off of, but it doesn't have any focus. And I don't know whether something could be done, at least something, a panel or something that could bend the ends around slightly. I don't know, I'm asking, but just a big flat area back there, it would frustrate people because out front won't sound like what they want. The second thing I'd like to ask is, what about the electrical parts of this? Have you worked out, I mean, you might have to have the potential for some lights, the potential for some electronics, and I hope these, I don't have any specifics.
We did ask about sound rigs and light rigs, and as far as engineering goes on the stage, would support? It was more than I ever thought you'd need.
Yeah, okay.
As far as power goes, it's not self-contained, but where we use it, there's usually decent access and the cost, it was cost prohibitive to add power to this, at least at. But we, we did discuss generators and things like that. Would have the, probably be able to pull enough juice for what we do currently.
They run the, the current stage that you run downtown for Hillon East West. I mean, is that plugged into a city outlet? If I remember correctly, it's 50 amp services, Chris?
Yes, correct.
50 amp service would probably do it, but I'm just asking the questions. I don't know.
So we looked into different design when you asked about the wraparound units?
Yeah.
And I think part of it was making that roadworthy so that we could stay within some limitations of not being a liver-sized load. Am I correct? Yes.
Well, you'll have to see, but first the flat wall back there will be disappointing to some people.
We'll rely, by the way, on the sound people.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll say that if, if the generator is needed, we're going to rent a generator for the event July 5th, and we'll have about $750 to the cost. So that, that is, will be important for people to know if they're going to be in a position to have to rent a generator. But the, refresh my memory, there was a ballpark estimate on this from two weeks ago. I don't recall his figure.
I believe this is on here, but I think it's $10,000 or more, unless there's a new number that I don't know. It was something between $10,000 and the number.
That was mine.
And I just wanted to.
Okay, there it is. Thank you.
We initially thought it would be higher than this due to some of the curtaining, but there are some really nice options out there. Now, we have two different companies out of Saline, one vinyl product and one, and, tell me about who the brand is.
Sunrela.
Sunrela fabric that probably would actually weather better and restore a lot better for us. And that would be really very reasonable. Most expensive price we had was $1,500, and that was just for the entire unit and to do a upgrade. So very, very reasonable. And those could all be that tie-on and just split up, and the heaviest piece was four pounds, is all. So that's very reasonable by.
On the, the rental amount, you have a base amount. I'm not necessarily looking at the amount itself, but the idea of if it's in amounts, is that for one day? Or is that a per day fee? Or if I am, if it goes over four days, is it 500 per day?
Per day, is that possible?
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess the funding of it, if they pay the rent, who receives the rent? And where is that money?
The city, I think, would be the reserve for that, because they're providing the ongoing maintenance for it. Would provide the checkout services for it that are related to the site, that would be our consideration.
Part of the rental fee go back to the city to compensate for the labor to do that, no? Is that what they're talking?
I think it all comes back to the city. That's just.
I mean, there's nobody else that could.
Whether the rental, the storage, was going to be paid out of that, the insurance was going to be paid out of that.
That if the city owns it, the city, I would assume, would be responsible.
My understanding would be, if, if the city owns it, then the city would get the entire rental fee to pay the storage, to pay the insurance, to pay for maintenance costs, offset labor and equipment expense of delivering and all those types of things.
Any other questions?
Well, in a politicized, I mean, what about the initial cost of construction building, where's that?
That's a nut, if this, if we, we are going to write a grant to the Nut Foundation for the entire amount. If this doesn't get funded, it doesn't get built. There is no auxiliary kind of funding. I have visited with Becky Goss about this, and in the round of funding that this would come out of are larger projects. It's 200.
10,000.
10,000.
This round.
And so, and they're kind of looking at that, this is according to Becky now. They were kind of looking at that funding as, you know, certainly larger projects, but more comprehensive projects that benefit a whole community kind of thing. So that's, that's what this is about. What we're asking tonight is to get the city's, city council's approval to go forward on this grant application. If it doesn't get funded, as I said, it's not going to get built.
Excuse me, we're going ahead with the proposal to make the grant application, not to.
That's what we need to have an okay from the city tonight, from this council.
Well, I think you would also need to say that you're going to accept ownership if it is funded. I think the details we need to work out to, but I think, need to agree to be the owner of this if this grant application is successful.
What if, what if only a portion of the grant was awarded in this round? What would happen? Would you hold the money in escrow, so to speak? Can the city do that? I don't know the answer to that. We have just always said that if it does not get fully funded, it's not being built, because there was no other funding for it. There's, I think there's a question on there that says if this project is not fully funded, will you accept any amount? So could we be prepared to say yes, knowing that it might take another year to complete the funding? If that is an option from that, from that foundation, I don't know. I don't think we have that answer to that.
I, I, you know, I.
I was just going to say, it seems to me that in the informational meeting, that that was suggested that there might be some rolling projects that would be funded from year to year. It seems I recall that, so I would, you know. I, I think that's something that needs to be thought about. You know, can the city hold the money? I don't know what you call that until the project's fully funded. I mean, then is there, you know, any ongoing fundraising until the next round of that grant? I mean, I think there are a lot of ways to make that happen. If it doesn't happen, all in one hit swoop. Bill, can, can the city hold money like that?
I would think you could. It's almost more of a question for Larry, but, but I don't know that there'd be any reason you couldn't hold it in some kind of a designated fund, whether that's a good idea or not. I'm also quite ready to say, but. Well, no, I don't think there'd be anything illegal about holding money in a situation like that.
And we have the dog park, it's the same, you know, it's, it's just a different scale of dollar. I guess, asking Greg, we don't know for sure. Hopefully it will work out, Lindesburg Work Association helping out. If it were not to work out, does the city have the staff in, means to take over that if that group?
I don't know if we've looked into that. We have been told to look for who's going to do this, because it was not something that the current Public Works or Holly's office is equipped to handle. And so what is the other option? And that's where Lindesburg Work comes into play. This is also one of the things, one of the, not deep off, projects from ADHOC committee that they said, is anybody working on this? And so because it is, it's an ongoing problem for Lindesburg, so I think it does have community support, at least through ADHOC, and.
So in other words, if the Lindesburg Work and the desert work, will they find another source for that?
An additional partner. The Arts Council has also been assessed, that would fill a lot of their commission as well. So it hasn't been brought to them yet, but would be another option.
Okay, any further questions? So Greg, we are needing a motion to what?
Well, actually, a two-part motion is that you would move to be, support the grant application to be submitted under the city's name, that's my three parts, and that you would accept the ownership of the nearly stage if successfully funded, and three, that draft or agreements be drafted regarding ownership, maintenance, setup, tear down, those, kind of those types of issues, whose responsibility and how it's going to operate.
Do you have all three of those?
Would need at least the first two, and probably. We'd need at least the first two and probably all three, just so that, go ahead.
Well, I think you're a little early on the third part of that, you know? Until you actually know where you're going forward. I, I don't think you want to get bogged down in details at this point. I think it's just a general question at this point.
So the two parts of submitting under the city's name?
And ownership.
And ownership.
Who else is in current stage?
Helen's Fest Committee.
And there doesn't have to be anything in the, um, in the motion that okays the grant proposal? I thought that was part of it too. In completing or submitting.
The grant proposal, it's a thing.
Okay. I, sorry, I pressed reading.
Let me just follow up, council meetings, real quick, about the Helen's Fest Committee on it. That's one of the challenges, I think, that's why we're having conversations, city council level, is we have a lot of groups and we have a lot of festivals, Midsummers, Helen's Fest, Messiah Festival, they're all separate entities, they're not one overseeing or overriding organization that oversees all of them, which if they were, it'd make it a lot easier, but there isn't. They're all individual organizations, all, most of them, I wouldn't see, three, whatever they are, I don't remember, but, um, that's the challenge of our structure in the town and there are just a lot of individual groups instead of one overseeing, overriding, whatever you want to call it, organization. Well, I would say that's an example of why I think, why we're having this conversation at city council, and whether it's not that one organization that logically do it within the community. So as far as partial funding, um, Betty said that there may be a stipulation in there that they may not fully fund our request, but let's just say they say, ah, they give us $60,000 a year. Would we accept that, I guess, number one, going forward, not knowing where the other $60,000 is going to come from? Uh, yeah, I mean, and number two, I guess, we need to find out, would they give us $60,000 knowing we don't have another $60,000 to proceed with it? And we're just going to put it into an account and, or hold it until we get the remaining money? Is that going to be a year? Is that going to be two years? Or would it be better for the foundation? And these are all questions I have no idea on. For them, say they partially fund it, would they retain that in the foundation until we either come up with a matching or we reapply for it and the next year maybe we get the other act or whatever it might be?
One of the things that I, I believe that they are considering in the foundation is doing a multiple year dedication. So say if they were one, if we were going to be building something and we needed $250,000 a year for three years, would they commit to $250,000 for three years? And I don't know the answer to that. I know it has been asked.
I, I think I would just, you know, my thought is with the number of grant proposals that I have written, I don't think I've ever checked the box that says this project, you know, I, if you can't fund it, I don't want anything. And that you work out the details later. Because you sign an agreement that says you, you know, you'll, you'll return the fund if you can't or isn't used for what is specified. So, um, and I'm sure the foundation has a mechanism in place to accommodate a request that's only partially funded or needs another year of funding or whatever. I, my concern is just, are you going to check the box that says, no, we don't want anything if we can't get it all?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, having been working on this project, that's what I would say. This was strictly, um, working on this and there have been approximately, I want to say eight to nine, 10 people working on this project, various parts of the community. And it, it is because the Nut Foundation gives, are there. And as I understood, that's one of the things that they were going to be for, is something extraordinary for Linsburg that we've never been able to do before. And, and I think that that is one, this is one of those things. We've talked about the need for a stage that is, could generate all sorts of events that we know are good for our community, not just, um, supporting the arts, but also for sales tax initiatives. When we have things happening that we know are going to come here and spend money and in our shops and in our restaurants and generate sales tax, we know that that's what happens. So this is just another one of those, um, I think pieces of the pie that are, are important for Linsburg as we continue to evolve as a tourism community. Okay, would anyone want to make a, um, motion to approve? Okay, what Greg suggested, can this be in one? One, okay, what Greg suggested, um, motion to support the grant application under the city name and to accept ownership if it is funded?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, are there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Well, I guess, uh, you know, like Betty said, that not knowing what all the mechanisms are with the grant, do we know those, um, you know, we're going to make an application to accept this, do we know all the fine details?
Recount the application.
Yeah, okay, maybe I didn't word that properly, but the foundation, do we know all the mechanisms within the foundation, what their requirements are? If they partially fund it, is there something in that that says, okay, we're going to partially fund this, but you have to build it one year? Or you have to proceed with the rest of them and just take their money, stick it into accounts, they're paying very much, and what people will come as? I don't know.
The, my understanding is that if not the requirement that, okay, if we fund it, you have 12 months to get it done. There is, in the application itself, the project start date, project completion date. And so that would be something that the grants committee would look at in their funding decision.
So let's get at two different things that are possible. I mean, if it's fully funded, we could have start date and date here. If it's partially funded, we have to start date and end date out here somewhere.
And I did check with the Nut Foundation and, um, for this to happen, for Helen's Fest in October of 2019, we will need the go-ahead, um, by the end of February, beginning of March, and Kelly Dowar, who would be the builder of this, um, which was another positive as far as, um, people in the Nut Foundation felt, um, because it's keeping the business in town. And, um, but if Kelly says that if he knows, yeah, what, what did he say? He knows by March.
Pick and start in March.
Yeah. Then he could, yeah, he would be done by Helen's Fest, by September or so. So, because that was kind of a big thing for us.
I guess, I'm just a little concerned that if we don't get fully funded, that then there's going to be some kind of obligation on the city at some point to come up with the rest of the money. And we just, to me, this is a, it's a luxury item, I think, but is it needed luxury item? If that makes any sense, I, I think, I think the city would probably, I'm not trying to say it's not, but we have a lot of other really needs within the city that we've identified, streets being one of them, and, I mean, just a lot of different things. I want to, Ralph Peter, Pay Paul, is what I'm looking at.
But there's no, there's no conflict with what you're asking in what the motion is.
No, but I, I just, I get it.
I get it, yeah, I understand.
Well, I don't, I don't think that we should put this upon the city. If it is not fully funded, then it doesn't happen.
If it's not fully, if it were fully funded in two years, though, it wouldn't be good.
I don't know.
More excessive 2019, but it would be usable for...
I don't know if, and we've never asked Kelly that question. Could you just think about it in two years now or is that, I mean, we never even asked him that question. And so I don't know what to, that was never been...
But I, I, at the risk of sounding creepy, I, I think it should be all or nothing.
I agree.
Very honestly.
I agree.
I disagree.
We just can't, um, but I don't think we can commit a future council to go, try and go forth with all this.
I agree. That's right, that's what I would add in mind.
So if it's not fully funded?
You and I agree.
Okay.
I must not understand.
I'll be voting for this, but I just, I'm a little uneasy with not having the power to facilitate the use of the stage a little more in detail, but I guess we'll trust the committee and the city or whoever's going to come up with that. I think it's very important that the details be laid out in extreme detail from the very beginning, just to avoid a lot of heartache and confusion.
And that's what I think we're trying to answer as much as we can figure out as quick as time, having never been through this before. Trying to anticipate as many situations as we can and, um... All right, any other discussion? All of in favor of the motion to support the grant application under the city's name and to accept ownership if it is fully funded? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? If motion does pass, stay tuned, you'll find out where it goes from here. So thank you and thank you to Jim and to Mike for your work on this and all of, thank you all. All right, next item of business is Resolution Number 06-18.
Resolution 06-18 is for the City of Linsburg to join the Regional Economic Area Partnership and execute an interlocal agreement in that, for regional economic, yeah, Regional Economic Area Partnership is agreed. It also designates appointees, um, to the board for, on behalf of the, the city. The Regional Economic Area Partnership is a municipal organization of city and county governments within South Central Kansas. We are kind of on that borderline area where sometimes we get swept more central, sometimes we get swept south central. This is an opportunity to partner on economic development opportunities with other counties and municipalities that are members within South Central Kansas. The annual membership fee is $1,523.
Do I hear a motion to approve this proposal, discuss it?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 06-18 and also authorize the membership fee to be $1,523. Second.
All right, some discussion here. I have been attending, um, these meetings, um, one in the Adlish State and one in Handover. Linsburg was welcomed with open arms. Um, we are the farthest north of all the cities, um, in the, or in part of this. This is a really, um, I think, well thought and put together organization now, looking more at a regional idea here than just individual counties or individual cities. I think it has a great, um, some great opportunities for us as a community. So, um, at the last meeting, um, there, there was a, a real push to say they want to know communities and counties, counties as well, um, that are going to support the work of all of this. And it was, it was great. So that's why this is being brought here today. Any other questions or?
It's, the formula is based upon population and if you're, if you are within a certain popularity, population, population range, and I think it's 3,000, 5,000, there's a base fee of $1,000, then it's like 16 cents per person or something, population. So that's how it gets to that number.
I have to ask. And then our participation will be, if I read that correctly, each member, full member, as a person or directors with an alternate.
Yes.
And then are there other activities beyond the group's board meetings or committees or task groups or are there, are there more opportunities involved in this or just a board?
No, there are other groups. There's Legislative Task Force Group, um, there's a Strategic Planning Group, I can't remember all of them off the top of my head, um, that deal with, with different issues. And from a board membership standpoint, the board member has to be an elected official and the alternate can be, uh, appointed official. Obviously, they have the Executive Committee that handles the day-to-day. In fact, the first meeting that we're attending was an economic summit. It wasn't a board meeting. In my opinion, part of the value of this is not only partnering with other, or other municipalities within South Central Kansas. We, as we taught urban and rural, it provides us the opportunity to partner with an urban state. This group is highly respected by the legislative delegation. So what, what this group does is push regional initiatives and when you have a, I mean, when you have, you have a fairly large legislative delegation, you're looking at Harvey, Butler and Central Kim. I think this works hard benefit, both legislatively and economically. They, they, as this organization works, they try to identify projects that will benefit the region and fellow partners. And if an organization or county, city has a project that only benefits them, they don't get in the way of it. You, you can go ahead and pursue it on your own, but if there's a way for everybody to partner together, they will. They have already said that they will speak and, uh, support and, uh, not always speak, but provide, um, letters of support, you know, for transportation initiatives. So, um, those are some of the things that we think from such organization.
Yeah, we're pretty surprised, I guess, as the new group, um, when I explained to them about requesting the access off of 135. What do you mean you don't have one? Do we don't have one? Well, it's important to them that we do have one. One thing they talk a lot about is airports. And, um, and so ease of getting on and off, saying to go to the airport and all that. So, um, I think that they, I agree with Greg, I think there's some good things that we need to edge out of this. All right, did I hear it?
Yes.
You have a motion to second.
And second, okay. And we, and this, and you, Greg?
Yes.
Jody, yes. Cory?
Yes.
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 Resolution Number 06-18, thank you. Um, Gary, are you talking?
Okay, so I'm going to take this now from all of this high-minded speech and we're going to talk about swan grounds. talk about this walk around. This is, I invite you to look at your package. This is a parcel of ground that's in the space. Anybody have any questions about where this acre is?
You're talking about my neighbor in here, so.
Lighten up for it. This is a, originally platted or designed with a plat as a drainage channel, a detention point. Typically, those sorts of carceles are deeded over the city when the, well, I don't know, it kind of varies though.
It can be dedicated, just like a street on the original plat, or it can be deeded later by description.
In this case, it didn't do anything that get traded around by private parties. And we have a constant trojan enforcement issue with this because typically the owner's out of state and they don't know what it is at their home. All they know is that it's classified as agricultural by the county, so they think they can grow crops. And I think the last time it turned its whole seven hundred dollars or something like that. They, they get some money when they trade it, but it's worthless. I think the city should take up the offer of the current owner and over-allow the past maintenance costs and do what's right and accept the grant. We will take on a little bit of past due property tax. It'll be around fifty dollars that has not been paid. I would hate to see this go to a sheriff's single because I don't know that we would be able to bid enough to buy it over other idiots that. I guess they're watching you there. That's my suggestion. I have.
Make a motion to approve land donation subject to parcel in exchange for writing off the charges assessed for mowing and maintenance.
I will second that.
The move is seconded to accept this land donation. Any further discussion?
I do think it's important for us to at least do a title check on it, make sure that there's not some outstanding lien, some outstanding mortgage that we'd be assuming is subject to.
Can we pass this tonight or do we?
Sure.
Subject to?
Subject to quick night.
Do I need to amend my motion?
Yes.
Do I need my motion to include a title search, please?
Second.
Has been moved and amended to accept this land donation, subject to a title search. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
And the police department thanks you as well.
All right.
You know, let's, let's back up a little bit. Given that we are waiving some charges against this and that it will incur a small expenditure for the title search, I think this should be a roll call.
Okay. Rick?
Sure.
Jody? Yes. Cory?
Yes.
Plank?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes. Motion passes again. All right. Applications for cereal malt beverage renewals. Is it due yet?
I can do it real quick. We have three applications for cereal malt beverage license renewals. They have submitted their applications. They've been reviewed and by the police department. Background checks have been completed. The renewal fee has been paid and ordinance requires an approval of those applications.
Right now, motion to approve this?
So.
Second. The move is seconded to approve the three cereal malt beverage renewals.
Question, confirmation, I guess. Cereal malt beverage means?
Breaching here?
That's correct.
Or, or me?
Yes.
No line.
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Can we do what we have to do?
In due course.
Okay. All of your favor say aye?
Aye.
All those? Great.
So the electric department has a reel wire, a reel trailer that they use to haul reels of electric wire. It's anywhere from small reels of wire to large reels of wire when doing construction projects, interduct, that type of stuff. This trailer was built, I think, maybe before I was born. And it was built by some farmers that were learning well. So this is kind of a safety concern, part of its use, trying to turn a blind eye when it goes out behind the fence. Another thing that's come into play, the association's come up with new rules as far as what our digger derricks can be used for. They specifically can only be used for electric equipment, that's digging holes, setting holes, lifting reel of wire and that type of stuff, which this all kind of falls into that. The reels of wire kind of fall into the exemption area that you don't know if they're going to do something to change it or if things are going to happen down the road. What that also does though is that puts into play, if we want to load a reel of waterline to take out on a big project, we technically can't do that. We cannot use the digger derrick to lift that, that reel of waterline. So what I would like to do is purchase a trailer that is designed to load reels of wire. Basically, you just back up to it. It has a bar that goes through the reel, it's got an electrical hydraulik, you lift it up and you don't have to use the digger derrick at all. Makes it a whole lot easier and a whole lot safer, especially when we see the condition of our trailer. This was discussed with the electric superintendent, we're going to try and put it in capital improvement budget. And after looking at the condition of the trailer and just how we do things, I thought maybe it was best if we can come up with the funds to pay for it to just go ahead and do it. We did have seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars that were unencumbered from the hydro accelerator that we purchased earlier this year. So what I would like to do is take those funds and purchase this and that way we don't have to deal with the safety concerns and we know everything's going to work the way it's supposed to. So I would like to have a motion to approve the purchase of a felling FT three R reel trailer from our contractor in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars plus ads.
Well, Chris, with all due respect to your relative youth and the ad industry, I would support this motion so much.
Second.
All right. Are there, the move is seconded to approve this. Any questions, please? Congratulations on your very thoughtful explanation here. All right. Roxy? Rick?
Yes.
Jody? Yes. Cory?
Yes.
Plank?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes. Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion does approve. Sales tax transfer, Larry?
The city collects one and a half percent sales tax locally in addition to the county sales tax and the state sales tax. So out of the one and a half percent sales tax, one percent is dedicated towards capital, uh, let me back down for a second. One half percent of the sales tax is to be used for capital improvements of the city. The one percent sales tax was implemented July first of 2010 with proceeds to go towards property tax relief, economic develop, economic development, I'm having time to say. I think it's contagious, and, and infrastructure. I won't go specifics on, on the exact detail of the numbers, but sufficient to say about a little over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars can be attributed to the one percent sales tax. And of that one percent, man, I'm going to throw up, I'm sorry. Have to look where I'm in here. Of that one percent, four and a half million is property tax relief. That's about a hundred and four thousand. Hundred and seventy-eight thousand products at least goes towards Sunstrom Conference Center bond. And thirty-two thousand was used for onyx seal in city streets. And then there's about another twenty-eight thousand dollars of covered for curb and gutter on Lincoln Street. So that takes care of the three pronged portion of the one percent sales tax. About a hundred and sixty-three thousand can be attributed to the half percent sales tax, which goes towards capital improvements. And on this sheet that you have in your, in your information there, it shows about two hundred and seven thousand dollars of actual capital projects. So that more than uses what is allocated for the half percent sales tax. Normally, we would ask for up to fifty thousand dollars to be transferred to equipment reserve fund or capital improvement reserve fund. But since we've already used that, we are asking that no funds be transferred to those reserve funds this year. That, that is my first request. The, the second request is out of the one percent sales tax, we usually cover the operating deficit of the Sunstrom Conference Center. That, that is not an actual transfer of funds, it is just a, a bookkeeping transfer showing that we are using sales tax for, for that amount. So I will not know the exact number until after the first of the year. And I will come back to you with the exact sales tax revenues and the exact need for the Sunstrom Conference Center. So tonight, I just need you to approve the transfer of those sales tax funds to cover Sunstrom Conference Center operating deficit, which number will be finalized after next year.
Okay. I know the number.
But since it's not an actual dollar transfer, it's just a bookkeeping transfer, we don't need another exact dollar and a half.
Okay. Is that all clear? So is this in one motion just to?
The one motion would be to allocate funds to cover the, sales tax funds to cover the Sunstrom Conference Center operating deficit.
Okay. So.
Just, the motion would be, I move to allocate out of the local one percent sales tax funds sufficient to cover the 2018 Sunstrom Conference Center operating shortfall or, or deficit.
That's the only part?
That's the only part we need to approve at this time.
Well, since you can't actually make that motion, you just say.
I thought it would be very explicit.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make the motion that you just suggested.
So eloquently.
Yeah.
Do you want your second to that eloquently?
Second.
Okay. Anybody produce or are you all just fine?
We do this every year.
Yes. I feel like this is a pretty routine.
Yes.
We used to do this in hearing council meetings.
All right. Any further discussion?
I don't think you need a roll call because you're not actually spending any money that's not already there. It always, it never hurts to do a roll call. I don't completely think it's required, but might be.
Mr. Dasek, Roxy? Rick?
Yes.
Jody? Cory?
Yes.
Plank?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes.
Thank you.
Historically, we've always reviewed the consumer price index to consider cost of living allowance increases. In the 2019 personnel budget, it was budgeted at two point seven five percent. We used the Midwest region through November CPI as the barometer for recommending a cost of living allowance. In November, it was two point two percent. The fiscal impact of this two point two percent increase would be thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars for 2019 if approved.
So the?
The motion would be to approve a two point two percent cost of living allowance effective January one, 2019 for all regular full-time employees.
Still moved?
Second.
The move is seconded to approve a two point two percent COLA effective January one, 2019 for all regular full-time employees. Do we need a roll call on this?
I have a question. Was, was that, was there a COLA included in the budget? I mean, I don't.
Yeah. There's a certain separate personnel budget that rolls into the personnel items within the respective funds. This gets paid out of general fund, police, streets, CBB, industrial development, recreation, the golf course, super water, and water. So that, that personnel budget is, I mean, it's per position and calculated in eligible merit, cost of living allowance, and then I provide those numbers to Larry so he can include those within the overall budget that gets adopted.
Thank you.
You said the golf course.
Okay. First people.
It has funds to provide to this?
Part of, part of the recreation director has their responsibility in this golf course. So we allocate personnel expenses across different funds. Like I'm, I'm paid out of general electric and water. Makes sense.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion does carry. You're not.
Any second exception?
You're not, you have that good session. Are there any others?
Two on this. City Hall Day, or now called Local Government Day, is January twenty-third, I think it's a Wednesday. If you would like to attend, please let us know, either Roxy, Cassie, or myself, and we will get you registered. The second is, I want to thank all of you for the holiday bonus on behalf of all city employees. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And last, I want to wish you to do a, a Merry Christmas. Who made this special meeting this evening?
All right. No others? All right.
The way you're saying this, this year is it would be helpful if we went to this thing.
Hey, I think it would be beneficial. Now, there's one thing that we will do and we've, we've set some, some potential days of Linsburg Day at the Capitol. And if we have to talk about that with the federal consulting is, one, we would have something set up in the rotunda that would be more than just a table with, with a family. Whether it's we bring in huge dancers and bring tea reading or whether we have someone or portion of the, oratorios, oratorios society come in and seem part of the Messiah to draw attention. But parallel with that. But parallel with that, we go to have meetings, whether it be with senate and house leadership or committees or with secretaries of respective departments. And that would be on the Lisburg.
The same day?
No, it would be a different day.
Different day.
Yes. And that day has a bit of a margin. I just, the seat didn't got the 2019 legislative calendar. The twenty-third, it's, you know, depending on what appointments we get set up, typically it's, we leave about seven in the morning and we get home, what, nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock that night.
Community partners, you can call that, I probably got that on the calendar, I don't see it here, will you give us a second?
You're very soon.
We're not going to have that this year. And it will be, we have done that for ten years. Talking with some of the past people that have been there in the past and deciding, let's take a break for one year and see if there's some fresh ways we can talk to our community. We've done surveys and we've been doing all sorts of things like that. And if anyone has any suggestions about something like that, we talk to our community and find out what they're going to do. But for right now, I believe it was.
Was it a week to ten?
A ten. And so we're just going to raise that off the calendar.
Okay. So you're taking the off the table, you can take it off. Right here, motion to, is Darren?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eddie is here. Thank you.